Okay.
Yeah, did you receive Suzanne's official post of resident?
Yes.
We did.
Okay. You guys will see that. So I don't think I have it here, but Suzanne did. I told you guys all that Suzanne did officially resign to deal with some family stuff. At least she's moved to Eugene, so she's not gonna be that far. Um, but so maybe we'll see her at her other events, you know, she might come over and take a drive.
Yeah, she flips the main burgers, so that's a good time.
I know. She's real.
She was really sad.
Absolutely.
Yeah, she feels sad about.
Listen. Suzanne's not the one with the movies, correct?
No, that's right.
Okay, yeah.
Over here.
Mm-hmm.
I get it.
Yeah, Suzanne, um, she came to a couple meetings, but she was at National Night Out with the burgers.
Yeah, we had a lot of fun too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, unfortunately for her, that's it. Like I said. Um, okay, moving on. I didn't finish business. Let's talk about the nature trails.
Okay, the county council awarded the contract.
Excellent.
Um, I just got the contract signed. I have it from them, so I haven't opened it, but I saw an email coming.
Well, we do have two things. I apologize. First of all, a baby info on yourself, so we all know who you are.
Oh.
Yeah, hi, so I'm Zoe Teplick. I've been a resident of depot bay for around fifteen sixteen years. I grew up in Utah and then moved over here and have lived here over half my life, so I feel like a true Oregonian now. Um, about two years ago, I bought my first house here in depot bay.
Yay.
And so, you know, really putting down the roots here. I love this town and it's it's been a pleasure to grow up here and, you know, be here from when I was at top high school and I went to Oregon Coast Community College and have lived here the whole time. Um, for about the past eight years, I've been managing the Orm Public House and I do, um, you know, restaurant managing, I run the kitchen, I do all the desserts and there's social media. And I just decided it's time that, you know, I wanna jump into the city and see what I can contribute and I'm really excited to be here with all of you guys.
And we're very happy you are.
Very happy.
Thank you so much for joining.
Thank you. Definitely.
And then, uh, maybe just an update on, did you know what was happening with our bridges and the trails?
Um, I've heard whispers of it. I've seen that they've been down, but I haven't heard any of the the updates.
Okay.
So they they've been down. So one of the things we we dad got forbid, so we got unfortunately only one contractor did, but he was under whatever estimate was. So it took some time for us to the engineer to get the drawings and plans and then we didn't want to really do anything during the season. So they went out for bid, um, we awarded the council awarded the contract last week, um, and I got solid sign contract in my email today. I haven't opened it up. Once they, um, once we sign in on our end, then they'll probably set up what they call pre-conference, uh, pre- pre- pre-pro- pre-project meeting, pre-project.
Right.
Anyway, why am I having more time today? But anyway, they'll set that up and, uh, we'll get some idea of when they plan on going in and they'll give us the project schedule.
Excellent.
Um, and stuff like that, you know, our city engineer, uh, comes in now twice a month, most of the time just to spend the day with us here. And he said that they'll, he thinks we'll light up, they want us putting these stringers in, which is stringers are the big logs underneath the bridges. Roll the stringers in and then start, you know, place them beside the old bridge and he's not really sure, but there was a concern about in-water work. So in-water work means, you know, certain times here you have to get a permit from, uh, O D F W and where you need to work in water, where you need to work in the water. But because they won't, they don't feel like they're gonna actually be in the creek.
Right.
They're not concerned about any kind in-water work, um, ideas.
Issues.
So, um, my plan is to, as soon as I can do that, I wanna create, uh, for the city overall is a projects page. So all we got a lot of projects that are gonna be hitting the city this fall and into next year. So I want to put a page on there and let residents and folks know where it's at, so they can see the most recent, um, update on the projects.
Excellent.
So, uh, I, as soon as I know when they will start, uh, and I know what their plan is, um, one of the things that we're hoping to get out of this is that, remember we had talked out of the meeting. So most of people don't know where the nature trail is, you know, they don't know that they go, mm, there's a sign, people just don't think there's this big trail gone to big expanse of grass.
Yeah.
So one of the things we talked about was some kind of a pathway to the nature trail, you know? And in one of our meetings, we talked about these bricks program, you know, um, so what we're hoping, but we don't know this is gonna happen for true yet, is that they will gravel the path to work at the trail and then we'll be able to not make them put the path, we'll be able to use that gravel path for our base, for our parks, our brick program. And the brick program we talked about, we initially said a warrant, but it doesn't necessarily have to be memorial. It would be like, you could say like, I wanted to put a brick down celebrating my mom. So when she comes out here this fall, she will see a brick there.
Yeah, like a donation, is that a donation? Yeah.
Right, exactly. So we'll we'll sell, we'll sell the, you know, bricks to help us put.
Build, build the park, build like, um.
Exactly, but build, build the, uh, trail back to the nature trail. Which will be nice and I think, you know, if we're, we could have that and, you know, help make some money and give the citizens, people, everybody a chance to have, you know, there's a lot of people that love that park.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Right.
You know, and they wanna put a stamp on it, so, yeah.
Question?
I just wanted to reiterate that it was gonna be eighty air accessible also for.
The the bridges will be to a point. They won't be able to be all the way because that's a nature trail, right? You can't make it a hundred percent.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Trail.
The path?
The path will be, because it'll be a, you know, be just like a regular car, not a a brick path, so.
Right.
Also, is our, uh, what if you don't have enough people volunteer through bricks? There's literally a brick regardless, and then whenever we get to it, offset the price?
Yes, yes. Oh, I think we'll have a lot of people going to do bricks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you too, that catches.
I mean, look at the memorial wall, that would just.
That's a long, that's a longer.
This would be a brick for any reason.
Right.
With injuries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want any nasty bricks.
And how are we gonna promote that? Promote the Oregon link?
Well, now that I have you on board, I'm hoping that you will help us in, uh, handle that for us. So once we get to that point of knowing
Yeah, definitely.
what we wanna do in the parameters and what we wanna do, so. But I think it'd be, but I think we could really make a beautiful path.
Really get the city involved and citizens involved and.
Yeah, that's one thing that I definitely wanted to to come on here for was because I, I love the nature trail and I love all the the parks here and, um, I I frequent them a lot and seeing that those bridges were down, I was like, oh, I really wanna get in and, you know, help contribute to that because I love,
Mm-hmm.
you know, I love that part and now that the bridges are down, it's like half of it's inaccessible.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
And, um, I was really excited when I was coming on here that it's like, oh, there is movement with that.
Mm-hmm.
And so I do think that putting that out there, that, you know, they're not just out of commission, like we're working on it and it's it's something that we're actively trying to get
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Right.
worked on, would be good to put out in the community, cause I just think a lot of people don't realize,
Absolutely.
you know, even with the website, I think a lot of people don't necessarily go to check the city website.
No.
And so putting it somewhere else, like on Facebook or social media, you know, in another way, I think would get people way more engaged with that. And just know that, you know, it's it's being worked on.
Yeah, but we also thought about, I I'm old school, I like my bills coming actually in paper, but if there's a way we can do for, however they pay you for power bills over here, put it in like an E. However, you put in the E letter?
Oh, yeah, like a newsletter or something.
Oh, yeah, we've talked about doing a list newsletter, but it's just a matter of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And who has it? We don't, don't.
No, I mean, it goes automatically attached to your bill.
Well, we, you don't, you wouldn't do that.
Oh, okay.
But I do think a newsletter would be something, even just across, not even just for parks, but across the board for like the council meetings or other, you know, commission meetings.
Absolutely.
Right, oh, yeah.
We have a lot of things that, yeah, so that isn't one of those things where it has been on those radars, it's just, I don't have.
Manpower. I get it.
I must have the time to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if that's someone, it's something the parks would like to help take on, I'm more than willing to do that. And talking to you, Zoe, at some point, maybe even getting the access to the city's Facebook page, so you can help promote these parks events, these, uh.
Yeah. I would love to do this now.
That would be awesome.
Right, so. That's definitely a possibility.
Yeah, you're a non-computer guy, so I'll just give you ideas.
Yeah, I I think that that would be really, really cool to do.
Mm-hmm.
Did we discuss a a price per brick?
Not yet.
No, I don't think we did. And it's really is, uh, it's really just, what I can do though is I can ask John in Deja to take a look at what, like how many bricks would it take to look something better. And then we can get an idea of what we would do at the price of a bid.
I don't.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And what size, and you need to payers, you need to brick, or by, you know.
I was just thinking about regular bricks, but he can give us a couple of options.
Little bricks. Yeah, I think too, it might be interesting to just set up, like find out the minimum price and then maybe put it out as like minimum donation.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, you know, like if you wanna contribute more for the brick, go ahead, but don't, you know, don't say there's five dollars a brick, you know.
Yeah, we want, we need it, we need it.
You know.
And that's actually the number that was taken in my head, five dollars.
Yeah, yeah, like minimum donation, five dollars.
Wow.
What I was thinking is to kind something in for tourism, with tourism, you know, let's get a depot bay T-shirt, wouldn't it be cool to have a brick? In depot bay, I mean, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely to put that out even further than just the depot bay community. I I worked in depot bay in the parks.
We get it. Right, I mean, yeah.
Exactly.
Be something in the little, little.
Yeah.
I'd be a, yeah, be a piece of depot bay.
Yeah.
That's what, that was my thought.
But I think five dollars, and again, I'm just talking because of what they charge in Lincoln City, that's really cheap.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I think we should go mental and tell, and you know your neighborhood better.
Well, like I said, I would want to know.
Yeah.
I would wanna get a better ballpark of what, and then what would this city be able, willing to pay, so.
Is there a grant, do you think maybe possible?
Well, it's funny that you should mention that because there is a grant that's opening, but I actually wanna look at it for something else.
It's for excessive. Okay.
It's called the recreational trails program. It just opened, they need a letter of interest by the end of, letter of intent, by the end of September, so, um, Parks and Recreation Department. And there's a couple of things in there, you know, obviously we, we, the bridge is covered, so we're not gonna go after a grant for the bridge. But we've got this pathway we were just talking about.
Right.
We also have, um, the ravine in the end trail, you know, that ravine up there?
Yeah.
That is desperate need of steps. My guys keep talking about doing it, but they don't have time to do it. So that's another thing that I think that it might be possible that that would be a really good improvement project. It needs to be trails, you know? Um, fixing trails, creating new trails, so, uh, I thought this would be perfect to, and it would adjust the safety risk issue of that ravine
Right.
where it's slippery when it's wet, it's lost cover, you know, there are definitely options on it, so, um, so I was thinking, yeah, I think that might be the project we apply for. I think we would have a better shot of getting that one than we would this memorial, this trail, this
Oh, I do too.
bricks program, um.
These are the safety involved, you're really.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so, yes, so as far as the path itself, I I think it's a low chance of getting a re- a grant for it
I do too.
because it's not gonna be really expensive. We'll be able to offset a lot of the cost, I think, honestly, so.
And this path, where's, where's like the, where is it sitting? Where is the?
So, you know, behind, down the side of the, past the basketball court, that whole path, all the way, there's just straight up on the right side, you're not in it.
Oh, back to straight, there's a, through the grass. Yeah, not in the middle, but yeah.
Yes, on the edge of the path, or just go right after. There's like, there's like a one people walk there, you know, there's a standard one, there's,
That's the least you ever could.
Yeah, yeah.
You can tell there's a faint one there.
Yeah, I can even tell, huh, okay.
Yeah, you can tell there's a faint one there, cause a lot of people use it, but, but, uh, the idea is to draw people back to our nature trail.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously after the bridges are done.
Yeah.
So, um, but it's it's good, it's a good thing to take advantage of some of the costs, which would be if they're doing the clearing and putting the gravel down, we wouldn't have to pay for that, that would be a profit, so.
Mm-hmm. So probably with four feet wide by two hundred feet long, something like that?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to get, I, um, John's been down there to see it, so, and he, we tried to kinda talk to him about it and it was a good thought, he thought it was a good idea, so.
Excellent.
To, you know, incorporate that into some kind of a trail after the construction, so.
Excellent.
But we'll get some new, as soon as I get the new information, so once we start the contracts and send it back, they'll be able to give us, um, an update, so.
Right.
And I'd like you guys to know, and if you wanna attend, you can definitely attend it, you know, to say that you know more what's going around
Mm-hmm.
about the park or about the bridges, so. Okay, that's all I have for the bridges. Don't forget to ask questions.
Thank you so much.
I just had one other comment, um, on some of the bridges, or the bridges that are there, there's like currently like a, some sort of sign that says like,
Sure.
stay off or, or something like out of order, but what about putting something on that's like kinda filling in like
Coming soon.
yeah, coming soon, new bridges or like updated bridges coming soon?
Good idea.
Just so people that are walking there, maybe aren't checking, you know, social media or the website or coming to meetings, know that that's being worked on and to keep them hyped up.
Excellent.
Right. Let me, as soon as we get a date as when I think they'll start, we'll we'll be as soon as, yeah, that's what I think, so.
Cause it'll reinforce the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Cool.
If you have a little, uh, picture of the project, you know, the drawings of the engineer?
Mm, but those too, sure.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And just because people have been asking, the bridges will look very similar to what they look like.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it, is it more of a restoration or is it just a new, a possibly a new brand?
No, it's a new capacity, because everything is rotten.
Right, right, right.
Gotcha, okay, cool.
I mean, and it wasn't put together according to the Oregon Forestry Code back then, we got one. So it's not only fixing these boat bridges that are rotting out.
Up to standard.
But bring it up to some accessibility standards and up to the foresting, so.
Gotcha.
So, um, I like the idea of projects.
Okay, and the next item is the debrief on National Night Out. And I thought it was a wonderful event. We had quite a few people, maybe than the first year, which was last year.
Coast Guard said the same thing, you know, there was a lot more people this flash, this year.
Yeah. And people were much more involved. They were, everybody seemed to have a great time. They have, I mean, thank you mayor for, and the city for complimentary food and for your assistance and your non-stop.
It was fun.
It was, it was great. And people were really involved and very excited about it and the games and the prizes and lots of fun. Thank you Kim for the meal and we just, all of us got involved, it was very nice.
There was, I, you know, I, uh, out and about and listening, I, there was not one negative. The only negative I was, is somebody wanted cheese on their hand or.
Oh.
I mean, I mean, how cool is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, cheese, that was gonna be next year, we'll make it next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I just.
We'll get some cheese for those who want to eat it, but yeah.
That's fine.
That was the only.
So, we're back to usual.
If that bounce house, you gotta do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so after January, I can order the bounce house, we can get into the schedule, so I will bring you guys
Yeah, I agree.
the catalog, because there are some amazing bounce houses. One of the things the guys was telling me about why they were there, his name was Spencer, he was great, you know, um, he's one of the elders, I guess. Anyway, he was talking about there is ones with slides, big slides for adults.
Mm-hmm.
And they also have obstacle courses.
Oh.
Mm-hmm, another thing I noticed is they also have pop-up carnival games. Like, you know, those games where you throw things or they also have pop-up carnival games.
Yeah. Oh, fun.
So I'm thinking instead of doing that, instead of trying to come up with some of these other games, is that, and I was really surprised at how inexpensive those were.
Absolutely. Good idea. Mm-hmm.
You know, even, even our one bounce house wasn't that bad, inexpensive at the dump tank, but, uh, some of this other stuff, so I'll end up getting a catalog from them and give them some ideas.
Right. You put that out there, you have long kids and you don't have to do it.
I, I want the adults to be there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And are you doing the dump?
If you want me to.
Well, I got the fire chief coming and the postmaster.
Okay, then I guess we're doing the dump taking them. You're gonna get them in the.
That's for next year or you, this is for the winter version?
Oh, no, there's no winter version.
Oh, gosh, no.
She'll tell you about the one that was in the summer. So.
Good sport.
Yeah, yeah, we raised enough to raise, to get a satellite telephone.
Nice.
Oh, that's great.
Hmm, two hundred and forty-five dollars. That's what I was.
Very impressive.
For just the dump tank.
Yeah, that means very impressive.
So. Um, anyway, it was a real good turnout, um.
And one more thing, we couldn't ask for a better commentator, you do a wonderful.
Oh, yeah, 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 people love me doing that, yeah, I know you do. Oh, that reminds me, so I, I met the station chief for the coast guard, uh,
Right, he does.
uh, senior chief archer, hammer archer, and next year she wants to have the coast guard do an open house at the same time.
Oh, excellent.
Nice, to take tours.
Tours, yeah, beautiful.
Because she's, she is a really big on community, so we can get to what she was like, well, what is depot bay do? You know, what kind of events do we do?
Mm-hmm.
And I think, I told her about, um, your mom Kathy, our Zoe, I told her about your mom, about the flea flowers, she asked me about it.
Yeah, it's like grandma Kathy.
Grandma Kathy?
Yeah. She's my, my girl.
Really?
Yeah.
Remember, Zoe's just barely above link, need a.
Well, no, I just didn't think Kathy looked like a grandma.
I read about all the time.
Oh, that's interesting, okay, cool.
But she raised me, she's my mom, but grandma.
Got it, okay, well, there you go. Um, anyway, so she was asking about flea flowers and about how that's right, and she thought it initially was kind of city, and I'm like, oh, no, this volunteer group does it all on their own, so, I, you know, so, so she may be, uh, at some point trying to reach out to you guys, so.
That's helpful.
Uh, do you know what the flea flowers?
Um, I've done some of their social media in the past, but it's, it's hard because it, it always falls on, you know, on Memorial Day and I
Oh, busy.
run a busy kitchen, so it's, it's hard for me to, to be super involved with that, but I do, I I did their website and I do some of the social media with that, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure. It's not gonna put sense, so.
I do wanna bring this up and you can stop me if I'm being, uh, out of school, but we need to have a finite, people have been talking in town or whatever about the chamber or not the chamber, because they want us to be more involved with things. They love the National Night Out. They said, why do we even need a quote chamber as opposed to when you guys can handle, or an off-offshoot, we talked about before, a business association would be a part of everything.
Well, the reason is, is because remember we went to the whole Parks and Recreation, um, changing from Parks Commission to Parks and Recreation? One of the things that the council approved was not us having any involvement with the flea, uh, with the, um,
Chamber?
chi- uh, the crab feed or salmon bake.
Right.
So unless that got changed, which it can be changed, you guys would just have to make that recommendation and it could be presented that you'd be allowed to do that.
Right. Right.
You might have more support for the city to have more now because the salmon bake and crab feed are done.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the, through the chamber.
Chamber.
Yeah.
And is, so another thing I heard was, uh, it was the, like the supplies for the salmon bake, did, did that go with the chamber or did we?
We have some things. We have like a big oven down there and we have some things.
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna say something that needs to be, um, addressed and or found out if it's for real, but I was, uh, told that the crab feed and or salmon bake, because it was a chamber event, was given to another group.
It has not been.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
There was another group, well, there was another group in depot bay, the Friends of Depot Bay, that were asked to take it on. They said it didn't fit the mission parameters of them being charitable organization, meaning they're trying to do charity work. They didn't think the salmon bake or the crab feed were charitable, and they're right, because that's not what it is about.
Yeah. Right, right.
So it made perfect sense that they didn't wanna take it on.
That they passed on it.
The other group is an out-of-depot bay nonprofit, and I suggested to the,
Right. Mm-hmm.
as far as I know, she's still the executive director, because I have nothing that says she stepped down and emails still go to the chamber or whatever.
Wow.
Um, I suggested to the current executive director that get putting the depot bay salmon bake and crab feed in the hand of it, out of depot bay nonprofit would not be a good idea.
Oh, okay.
And it wouldn't be. They, we would have a lot of people upset about
Oh, yeah, I agree.
our event.
Yeah.
Being handled by somebody not in depot bay.
Ma- mayor?
I, I would like to maybe talk with you after the meeting, because I think we could do like, I propose ambassadors?
Right.
And do the, our crab feed and salmon bake. There's so many people out there that want to get them together.
I agree. Because I. Well, so. That's, I think we could get the volunteerism right back again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I definitely think there's a lot of people in the community that would step up and cheer.
Yeah. I get you.
Well, I know there would be.
I absolutely know that, but my hands have been tied.
Yeah.
Right, I get you.
Yeah, I, I might suggest maybe doing almost like, the, instead of taking over both and just going for it, maybe just going in for like, let's try doing the salmon bake and then see how that runs with the community and how that runs, you know, internally, and then maybe picking up the crab feed
Whichever you guys think is the most important.
like at a later stage.
Have you ever done any of one of them?
I haven't.
I've done both of them.
Yeah.
I would start with the crab feed.
So what, a small version?
Okay.
It's smaller.
It's smaller, and if we get reception from that, uh, because the salmon bake is huge.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it is, it takes so many more volunteers, and with the crab feed, we can do it with twenty people.
Oh, maybe a little bit more, like, you did that, that first year?
And. Yeah.
God bless you for, uh, that situation.
It was only more because you guys did shout out the call and things like that. We not, we would not be doing it.
Right, yeah. That's fine, that's.
Yeah, it would just be focused on the crab.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would just start with the crab feed and just make it simple and easy and, um, so.
Perfect.
That way, you're right, I think because we don't want our name, I should say, depot bay's name anywhere else but us, that's how I feel.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, cause I, I have, you know, on the, on the, the, uh, year before last, I was involved with the, the crab one, and, uh, it was kind of a mess without, without the city being.
Yeah.
Well, the city was involved.
We still cannot involve the city. I mean, we would have to probably form a five O N C three
Right.
group, uh, which is a, I don't know, simple to do.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, determine what we would wanna do if we made a problem, things that would come from it, so.
Right.
It would just be, just to get us together and to promote our city and tourists and bring people back.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree with you, because all those same places, the ones that we, when the first, the year that we did it together
Yeah.
last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Yeah, we must have had, what, twenty buses from different planned retirement homes?
Oh, I don't know, all I know is for three hours, it was non-stop people.
Yeah. It was.
Long lines. I know, I saw one bus, but then I was inside working there, or I wasn't looking at it.
Oh, it was not. It was non-stop, yeah, start with that, like you said, and again, figure out the best way of doing it.
Yeah.
Because Kim, like you said, your hands are tied, so whatever we need to do, the subcommittee or something else we can do to make it
Yeah.
that we can't be a part of it, or do we fight back to?
I think you should.
Okay, you have to get it back.
I, I mean, why wouldn't you?
I agree. Because that way, if it's labeled with us too, for parks, that's our signature. Nationally not as great, but this could be the signature bring back.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and what's the process for, for getting that back?
You guys need to make a recommendation and then your chair should, or somebody should present to the council.
Yeah, represent to council.
Like, why are we here? This is just important to do, and hopefully you can have a sponsor from the council that would support this.
Yeah.
I, I will, because it's, it's, I mean.
Actually, I think you would have that one support you to, you know.
It's just, it's our community, and, you know, people have loved like the pet hallucin that we have and, um, you know,
I agree. Mm-hmm.
starting to do our, um, polar plunge, that is so much fun.
Our people like getting together with each other.
And they're, so it's, people enjoy it.
Yeah. Well, I would say that the only negative coming out of any of that, but, is what I got from the community when I was a part of the chamber, and again, this one of this was, uh, how can it, done with, I didn't even know it. Is they didn't get the communities involved they should have.
Yeah.
Which is why we lost all the volunteers.
Yeah, but that was, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's neither here nor there, I'm just saying, that's why we need to get some kind of an answer and take it back ourselves. And we're not even getting an answer, really, we can still do that, and then.
You can't take it back and it's Parks Recreation Commission until you get the council to change it.
No, that's what I mean.
Yeah, oh, for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we don't have to deal with any
Yeah.
chamber or anything like that.
No, I mean, and the things that I understand that were in the storage unit weren't much, you know, that, that the city can't easily replace, you know.
Yeah.
No. No, what I'm asking is, on the record, is, uh, is it still locked? Is there still something there? Is it empty?
As far as I know, it's got, it's full. I was originally told it was emptied, but then she told me and clarified it was not emptied.
Uh-huh, but that's something if we do, you know, put the proposal to council of taking it back, we could then reach out that way and see about acquiring any of that stuff.
Uh, yes, I have a good relationship with her. I'm sure she would work with it. She wanted the city to do it anyway.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I have bold covers, but anyways, um, I'm sorry.
And I think, I, I know she was.
I do too.
Yeah. I have no doubt, so.
Well, that's exciting, that we can get that together. The biggest thing, like the reason I didn't wanna be a part of it this year is number one, I was no longer a part of the chamber, and there were no volunteers.
Yeah.
Nobody wanted to be a part of it, as we discussed, and that's what I think.
She destroyed the whole system.
Like you said, if we took it back, just from talking to y'all, and with all the people you know, I don't think volunteer would be an issue.
All I know is that I normally have plenty of volunteers for the events that I do here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I know that once we did more and we put out the call, people would come.
We're doing for the, uh, National Night Out, we need more than enough people. We need people saying, do you need something to do?
Yeah.
I know, I just.
And that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah.
I know, so, this, this, this is that, the heart of that community, this community has such a heart for that stuff.
So I'm thinking a, a series of bounce houses. Yeah. Agreed.
Yeah.
And it's good for us. It keeps us bound.
Mm-hmm.
The community, so.
All right.
Obviously, I'm nobody good.
I love it. Yes, ma'am.
When do we wanna put it before council?
What, uh, just some, I'll, I'll.
I'm not September third, the next meeting will be September seventh, the wrong calendar. September seventeenth. If you guys want to, um.
And it's gonna be the following year, correct?
Yeah, and we, we, I think we should stay with the same dates, the third weekend.
Will be. We have people calling on it already.
Mm-hmm.
And the, if we do the salmon bake as well.
Stanford weekend.
Uh, let's, yeah, September, if we do that, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, uh, whoever can be with me on September seventeenth to address council and bringing back the, um, crab feast for, to go back to Park and Recreation Committee, they will oversee. I can be.
We need to do the crab feed and the salmon bake, get both, because you don't have to come back. We need to do the crab feed and the salmon bake, get home, so you don't have to come back.
And the salmon bake, and then we'll do the crab feed first, then we'll take it from there. I need, I have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Favor.
Okay.
It's the word. So seventeen, and that's a, uh, Tuesday, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, now it's nice on the mountain, the planning commission has LLC, so I can be at these. And Kim is always, will shoot out emails to remind us all about everything.
Yes.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, I'm really excited, and next, let's talk about movies in the community hall.
Okay, so, Loretta's not here, so there's not much I can share with you about that right now, except that she is working on it.
Right.
I gave her the dimensions of the community hall, and she's actually gonna come and find out, and she can see the community hall, see how things could kind of work, so. Um, but I did have Gina look at the dates.
Good.
This is what we're talking about, the dates on this community event calendar, so one of, uh, so one of the things we talked about was movies in the park. And sounds like a lot of fun, and like, yeah, but Loretta Miles, I don't know if you know who she is?
Yeah. I don't think so.
Okay, she, um, owns Salmon Cinema, so she has a lot of experience with getting, you know, doing movies, getting movies. So she really loved the idea, that's why she joined the commission, so she can work on that program.
Uh-huh.
But we decided that we're gonna start out and test the waters at the community hall. So, starting October twelfth, with a Halloween themed event, we're gonna have two showings, one early in the day of a more kid-friendly Halloween movie.
Slash possible contest, your costume contest.
I think we wanna have, I suggested having a commitment, like a Halloween party slash, you know?
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
So the kids stuff would be early in the day, and then more of, uh, adult, and I don't, you know, I mean adult, meaning older person, not a, you know, adult. Make sure that's clear, um, something for the adults, or, you know, a, a party that way, uh, we're gonna get a popcorn machine, and we're just gonna have, we just thought we would have, and we were gonna get new chairs, because those chairs are not gonna be comfortable to sit in. Sorry. She probably loves those chairs, but we
Oh, you're the one that found them.
They're painful, but, um
It's one of the first things she had in order.
I know, but we already
It's so funny.
We're gonna find more chairs.
Okay, so we're thinking
Anyway, I don't think we're hard, we're gonna use those for, we're gonna, we're gonna use those for our events.
There you go.
So we almost, I, we didn't really go out to, but we had to use some of those chairs last, so, anyway.
So we're thinking
So that, at least for Halloween, it's definitely gonna be a two-parter
Right.
for the kids and then for the adults, and then November one, I couldn't find that we, I couldn't see that we came with a run, uh, theme, so we'll just come up with something.
You don't do Thanksgiving theme?
I, I don't, no, I wanna do what, what movies for Thanksgiving, all I can think is Hallmark movies, and I don't know
That's my, that's my
On the multiple guys, the, you know, the choir, with, uh, John Candy. Well, it's green, orange, green, and olive, they're such a wonderful
Thanks for giving
Okay, well, there you go.
That's definitely our kids.
But remember, some of it though will be related to what movies she can get.
Right.
So, her idea is to bring back a selection for us to, to take a look at, see what we want to do.
Right.
Uh-huh, well, it's not like classic, like, Deepo Bay films, like films that either Deepo Bay, like, like one flew over the Coopies, and
Yeah, we talked about that.
It's not for the kids, like She also does want a group, old classics, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we thought about doing for the Halloween, and the adult one to be like either Psycho or something like that, or
Uh-huh.
Oh, yes.
Thriller.
Uh-huh, or, um, Coraline is a Oregon movie.
For the adult, the adult part. Now, if you're scared, yeah, that
Coraline is?
Yeah, Coraline is a big case, I think.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, I don't know, not yet, Coraline, because, uh, uh, maybe it's not
Lots to see, I'm sure we'll be able to get him, so. But what I'll have to do is for the next meeting to make sure she brings in a catalog, she's been working with somebody, she's, and they're very, more breadth, they're very supportive.
Yeah.
I was a bit confused by her last mail, because, uh, uh, she hasn't mentioned the, the community center, I gave her the mentions of the screaming of the night, and, uh, she just ignored it, so.
Okay, so
It was just sitting at the room, like dogs are eating the boss.
Did you guys, did you send it back, you know?
Uh, I sent it, it's mentioned, uh
No, no, did you send it, did you send, did you, it was an item you needed to return by a certain date?
No, yes, uh, but, uh, see, this is
It's already passed that date, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so
Oh, crap, okay, well, let me, she's supposed to get with me to come in and look at the dimensions, I sent her the dimensions.
Yeah.
Are you good with dimensions?
Yes, I sent them, uh, one month ago, uh
No, are you good with understanding how your screen would fit in our community hall? Then I will send you the email.
Okay, thank you.
And you can tell me, because I'm not good with dimensions, and she's confused about what Paul sent her, because he went down and measured the community hall.
He measured the back?
He measured the back, he measured the windows, but I, I don't, it seemed to have lost her a little bit, so I'll send it to you after the meeting, and and you can say, oh yeah, I'm watching your work, great.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Cause I would rather do that, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, um, yeah, so that's the, because I was like, oh, I don't talk dimensions.
Right.
I just don't, I have other talk, I, dimensions is not one of them.
Last thing, we're thinking holiday theme, we're thinking, of course, classics, Wonderful Life, and also Home Alone, I'm just for the kids.
For the kids.
Just depends on, like, if she says she could possibly get both, and again, it all depends on, I'm thinking, what new for the kids and five or six for the adults, since it's a Saturday?
In the winter, with the being dark, it's easier to do that, and we're gonna get screens, we're gonna get a, blind floor is actually having a flea sale on our blinds, and we're gonna get those blinds. That, because I've always thought the window should have, anyway, because there might be people that wanna close it, or, that's
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, um, so, uh, yeah, it'll be, I don't know, um, I was thinking more like two and six or seven or something like that.
Oh, really? Oh, so keep a closer window?
Well, that, you know, so somebody that could be there all day and day, but because later in the evening, well, people, you know, like, you know, they'll take kids to a, two o'clock showing, and they'll be, put them in the bed, and if they wanna come back for, uh, six thirty or seven, they can go.
And it's gonna be constant upon weather too, of course, it's, it's gonna be crazy, and you know your neighbor better than man, where I'm at, people just don't really do anything around it, they stay home. But, uh, either way, I think if you do one, and the first one people start talking about, that's it, and keep on going.
Yeah, especially if we put the word out.
Right.
Right, and this kind of lights us test the water, see how few people feel, and we can also have a lot of surveys, and say, we're driven about doing any of the park, what do you think? You know, friends, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause we would be, that's a different kind of plan for us to do movies in the park, you know, so, but it's amazing that you can rent a Johnny's screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The inflatable ones.
I was thinking, all these things you can do now, it's
Yeah.
We gotta use cheat.
And it works, it works, yeah. Okay, so next, we're gonna talk about new business, what's next?
Okay, so, um, that's why Kathy's here, we, uh, do you wanna talk about it?
Okay.
Well, uh, we're trying to do a end of the year thank you to not only our staff here, who are amazing and they help with everything we do,
Mm-hmm.
uh, but also for all of our volunteers, for people on the planning commission, for some rec, uh, all of our volunteer groups, budget committee, council, um, people that have just volunteered, uh, cooked the burgers and
Oh, yeah, nice.
All, any, any volunteer for the city for the last year.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you had a tentative date?
I put a tentative date of September twentieth, it's a Saturday.
Hmm.
No, Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon.
For staff, because then they, you know, they're done at three thirty, and the guys can attend from up there, and go home, you know? It's a Friday afternoon.
So, um, Paul had wanted to do like his steak sandwiches, do you wanna do that?
If Paul wants to do it, we need to help him with it.
Yeah. But
And I think
I don't really want him, because he's done it so many times.
He likes to do it, though.
Does he?
I'll get Al to help him, Al's being trained, he'll be a Paul for cooking.
Okay.
We have our chefs in this city, Paul's the primary, so he's been training out to cook.
Are we gonna do it down at the park?
I thought we would do it at the park.
Down at the casino?
We don't, I don't wanna do it out here, I just thought we'd just down at the park and the casino.
Down there. Okay.
Um, nothing fancy, just a chance for people, for us to say thank you, I'm thinking about a little, uh, little, uh, item of appreciation
Mm-hmm.
for people, that would be nice, yeah. And
Probably get some expensive plaques or something.
Well, I don't know, plaques.
Do you, pass it?
I don't care about plaques myself, I don't hang them up.
Okay.
But I would use something like, like my last shop, they gave us a mug.
Oh, yeah.
That is the
Deepo Bay.
Thank you, or gratitude, I can't remember what it was, you know, you get the right one, and you do that.
Right, that's true.
You know, or, you know, something people will use, but most people don't care about plaques. So, but there's a lot of things we can look at, you know, as a, say thank you for, I mean, even a T-shirt, or a sweatshirt, or jacket.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's a, it's sky's limit, I'll bring you some suggestions next time. Uh, well, the next time will be right before, now we're gonna get it now.
Yeah.
I'd love to do a sweatshirt.
Yeah.
That'd be what?
A sweatshirt or T-shirt or something.
Volunteer for Deepo Bay or something.
Yeah, I can, see what I can find, um, well, I don't know about volunteer, but I just think it needs to
Thank you for the
Figure out something, I think it needs something, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate, because that's another thing, is I'll wear a city of Deepo Bay, like, staff shirt, because, um, staff, that's not a general
Uh-huh. Right.
So, unless they're actually staff, so I'm gonna figure out something to do that.
So, I'll work with Paul then on
On the food, yeah, yeah.
I'll work with Paul on food and
You guys going to grocery cutters, or who's giving you a cow?
Well, I don't know, he usually buys these beautiful tasty steaks from the chef store, they're like, things that you break them up and pour in the food, it's really good.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Is it one of your work?
I have no idea, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the chef store.
It's right here, the shopping.
So, um, okay, you know
And we've had a budget for that?
Well, it's enough community events, not really community event, but, and so you guys also have a council budget.
So Oh, okay.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so
So if you wanna just help me with serving and
What I mean?
Um, organize
You do?
Okay, so, the date's down here.
Is that okay, conducive with everybody?
I think you should work on all Fridays, so we're
Yeah, what's, what time would it be?
Two thirty before.
Two thirty to four thirty?
I might be able to swing that.
See, I can do serving, I mean
Of volunteer serving and eating.
Okay. Good, good, I love that, so.
My hands in your also, or
But, yeah, I wanted to, you wanted to do this last December, but it didn't, didn't, didn't end up that way, so. Um, in October, though, we are gonna start planning for Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna start planning the events, the things we wanna do for Christmas, I have
What Christmas?
Pretty lady, I, I have a bunch of volunteers, so we'll, um, wrangle them in, and we'll probably have another meeting at the community hall, like we did last time.
Yeah, yeah, let us know about that.
And say, okay, now, I don't know about decorating downtown, but I really would like to
Would like to hear that.
Maybe Zoe can think about it, wanna get these businesses to do more. You guys did great last year.
Yeah, we like to decorate the
That was beautiful last year, I loved it, but I don't, I wanna get the citizens last year, what happened is, the idea was, we would decorate, but staff doesn't have time, we don't have time to do, you know, and then we ended up with a bunch of Doug lights that I thought were better than they were, but mostly we just didn't have time to do it. Poor Kathy and Kenny and, Ellie, you helped too, or Todd, you guys decorated, did most of the decorating, and it's like, ugh, but, because the idea was that if we provide the lights, they would do the decorating, well, that didn't work out, they wanted us to do the decorating too.
Well, the other thing that we ran into is owners of the building did not let us put any nails or screws or anything into the
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Building, so that's where our hands are tied, so
We could
I, I, I would just think that
No, I don't wanna do that, but what I wanna do is have a contest among the businesses, come up with a, come up with a big prize,
Yeah. We're talking about
come up with a big prize that would encourage them to participate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, competition.
Like a tax break, or
Why, I could only give them the things that I need it, you know?
Okay. We have a lot of work in, in, in the, the, just trying to figure out what the, the people wanted.
I know, it was too much work.
Yeah, that's why it's gotta be them, them doing.
Too much, it was just too much, you know, and then there was things that, we ended up having our user crew to do, because you guys
Yeah.
were too high or whatever, and it just didn't work out, but I wanna do a coast for the vote, our contest for votes, to get more of them encouraged, we did have a nice show last year, but I looked at flea flowers, and how many decorated, I couldn't believe how many votes went up this year, it was awesome. And I thought, well, I know why you're doing it for flea, but maybe I could do, we can come up with an idea or something to tantalize them for, um, and I might ask, uh, the harbor commission posted, I had two vote captains here, so I might say, we encourage, one of them decorated anyway, so, but, uh, anyway, so I kinda wanna do that, um, thought about other things we incorporate, so get your brains going, and we'll, we'll meet in October and have our
Sure, we can, go ahead and set the date for the tree lighting downtown, usually it's the first Friday.
I was gonna say, it's the first Friday, so
Oh, okay, so it's the first Friday.
Yeah, I'll get my, um, you know, when, when we get some more stuff, we'll get, get my calendar events, we'll start getting some of these things up on the city's website as well.
People get so busy, we need to, yeah, think about them and
I mean, December sixth is the first Friday.
Okay.
And this is, again, it's all can, it depends on whether it's mild, or some people come in, so it depends
We do it rain or shine.
Rain or shine.
Oh, I know, I know, I was there.
Just
And Chester's, he's
Yeah.
down to be Santa and misses Santa again.
Excellent.
Uh, Cam, are you doing the public again this year?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have a date for that?
Yeah, December something.
She got a date for us.
Sure she does, just December something. Yeah, and I'll probably do, the crab fair was a big, was a pretty big one, so I'll probably do that again, but not on Friday, Friday was a bad day, Saturday and Sunday. We had way more turnout Saturday than we did on, so.
Excellent.
Um
Anything else we, uh, wanna discuss it? Any questions from the commissioners? Committee?
I, I, we were talking one time about changing our time from noon to a, to, uh, to a different time on Monday, six, in, like, a five o'clock or whatever.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I definitely can do it, this is the only thing that works for me, and you work also.
Yeah, Wednes, or
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays I'm open, Tuesday or Wednesday. But twelve works.
Okay, I thought, I thought that, that was brought up.
No, I mentioned that Wednesdays have been problematic for me recently, but
It has been also.
Yeah, December twelfth, I think I should put that in my calendar.
And my, the other day, Kansas, uh, Thursdays for her, because I have a little on church, and she says, uh, on, that day.
That's cool.
You guys okay, all right? Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Okay, so, we're okay, hold on, so
Everybody okay with noon on, I see.
Just keep in the
Just
No change.
Well, I wanna re-welcome Zoe again.
Thank you.
And you may, may please be coming for you guys.
You know, she ordered it already, man, she was on top of it. I will get those both fixed.
It is approximately twelve forty-eight in the void colors meeting, for journey.
Great.
Thank you.